I'm Maury Pete's King, serving Rockville since 1972. Dine in, carry out, or drive up window. Come and see us. Thank you, Rockville, for 50 years of business.
I've got 6:30. Why don't we go ahead with the claims?
Darling, your board check is in there, and then there's a check for Ted for your reimbursement for your expenses at CARES Act, so that's all in there.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You'll figure that out, I'm sure.
Receiver work any better? No.
No, it is.
It is.
I can get it from this side of the road, but not that side of the road.
If you go north, you can't get it? But if you go 236, you can?
If I park by the south side of the road, like the U or Bull In, they read from there. Don't mess with them. Don't mess with them.
Okay, hold on.
I just shake my head, it's like, okay, I'm gonna read today.
Take the corns out, but...
Corn in, do it.
Yeah. Sounds that way.
But yeah, at almost 90% of time, we'll read if we're parked up on the south side of the road. I have drip out crap running part sometimes. How are you? He's here, Ryan, how are you? He's a day, you're a day older here, a few days older. Feeling too, huh? That Amstons is for the filling software on the water, but I should be seeing something from utility supply for switching over to that belt clip. Because it's supposed to give you an adjustment. I asked Scott last time I talked to him if I know about it. He said I'm not on that end of it. He said I'll find out, see how long. Thought it would come when they did my renewal. And then I didn't know grapes were here, somebody must have stolen them.
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, they wanted to do their annual.
So it looked like everything was good?
Yeah. Yeah, they called me, I don't know, a month ago.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah.
He said he was coming from somewhere up north and wondering if they could stop and do it. And I said, "Works for me, I'll just unlock and you lock and you're done." Did you make any copies?
I made one for me. I guess I got an extra, I made two, because I wasn't sure if you had one.
Well, I got a double sided one. I'd rather sign it.
Okay, because I wouldn't show what I'll use.
You have some.
I got two copies here.
That one brought eight or 10, that's really good.
I'm trying to go digital. Hard to sign that.
Yeah.
I need three copies, I probably don't go over stuff that I wasted my time reading. Why don't you bring some warm weather back with you, if you guys come back?
Okay.
Although it was nice last weekend for you guys.
Yeah.
I didn't ask, did you guys have good weather? Which is more than south than you should, if you didn't.
Yeah.
You like it down there?
I did.
We liked it when we went down the last year this one.
We really did like it.
And where we were, I remember where that cul-de-sac was, or that roundabout was in the center of town, that you could just walk down to the little shops. We're about three houses back on the ocean side. So every night, we'd just walk down to just like where we was going for supper, and you know, we'd never use our car, and...
We were up in the northern part of the island.
Oh, okay. And we drove up in there one day.
There was a BRVO up there. You know, the beaches were really...
Yeah, yeah, we went on to up there on the bay and watched the ships come in up there on the, I guess the right side up there on the P R area.
Yeah, we, I did, I really liked it.
So, yeah, Ron and Mary Kay, we were down there all lot.
Okay.
And so they, so we've been hearing them talk about something, decided to try it.
Karen and John Hart will go down there?
Yes, I think they're down there now, I think.
Put Jan's in.
At least I saw they were before.
Grapes, they been out the last? Mm-hmm. Did their annual? Okay.
Now Kathy, does that catch up you Mac then? With everything finally?
Well, we have to...
Well, everything that they've done so far.
We have to loan with the town, the town, but yeah.
We don't have a bill for the drain?
No, he said that should be coming through here, I asked him about that. He said that should be coming through here within next week.
The bill for what one?
The drainage issues, because that's a town bill.
The one that Blackstone was, Mr. Blackstone was here on?
Yeah. It's a drain shared between FutureX, the elevator, and the town. What was that? The drain back behind the park there. Okay, claims approved tonight for the town was $66,433.69. And for the water department, $37,886.56. Under old business, Dylan is here tonight on behalf of Westler to present the agreement on the P E R, which we did have discussion about it. I have had this in front of Nick Soder for his approval, and he has no issues with that. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dylan, Morgan, to go ahead and present that.
I brought extra copies. Have these. And would you like me to go through it with you guys?
Yeah, I did forward that, I don't know if you had a chance to go through it, but yeah, we'd like for you to.
Just looking back, you know, it's been a few months since I've been to the board meetings. So I think September, we were looking at the technical memo. If you recall, we had put together the three different options in terms of different ways to approach the project. Working without D N R, and you know, using that plan versus other things. So that was back in September. So this year, just a little bit timeline or background, recall where we're at today. September 15th, and pretty well every other week since September, I've been having conversations with Amy Miller and Steve Brock and Kevin to look for ways to get the project funded and make sure we understand what the steps are to move forward and try to get some grant money into. So in September, Steve Brock, well, moved back up. In July, we submitted for a grant application to the state water infrastructure fund to get the P E R funded. The town did not get that grant. So then in September, Steve sent a specific grant request to the Indiana Finance Authority pretty well to do the same thing, and we found out that grant was denied. There are several things coming up in the next calendar year with respect to funding that I think puts the town in a new opportunity and be able to move this project forward on an affordable basis. And I think you guys have talked about rates and those types of things before. So there's the infrastructure bill to pass in Washington DC. There's also the round two of the A R P money, which the town will get some, but also the state and lab funds available for round two in 2023. A lot of the agencies that are involved in providing grants and loans for these types of projects, such as S S R F or rural development or co-prep, also get allocation. So the reason I mention all those things is to be able to be eligible for those grants and loans we have to have the primary engineering report in the format that those funding agencies will accept. So that's what we're presenting to the council tonight, is to amend our contract, which was originally for the technical memo, which had those three options, and expand that out to the format that we can then submit for both grant and/or loan funding options to build this project forward. So we're really adding this section called primary engineering reports. We're gonna take some technical information that we had from the technical memo and really just take a, one way to look at it is we're gonna take a five-page report and we're gonna make it like a 50-page report and have all the environmental and archaeological components. We'll talk about population now versus 20 years from now. Some of that information we can glean from the report that the county had, but it does need to be tailored specifically for the town. We'll talk about a 20-year planning period, will identify operation and maintenance costs, layout design criteria, lay placement requirements, provide some conceptual layouts. I know we're talking generally about what potential location, should a new wastewater plant be built, where that will go, and then put that report together into that report. Environmental impacts will be important in regulatory and permitting issues as well. So on page three, we'll submit two copies of draft of the draft report back to you at the council. We'll sit down in a working room or whatever format you'd like to go through that and make sure that you guys agree with how it's laid out and the conclusions that are in it. We'll update that into a final P E R. Once we go forward with funding agencies, help care insurance are gonna be required, so that's included in here as well. And then all along the while, just coordination with these funding agencies. We do have an application in already to S R F. They followed up and just asked what the status of the primary engineering report is, because that's what the next thing that they're looking for and looking to move their process forward in terms of approval of the project. Any questions on the scope? As we've laid it out? So compensation is there in the middle of paragraph three, and we've talked about an arrangement with the town, and that's laid out in this paragraph. I hope that's agreeable to you. From a schedule standpoint, 90 days to turn around draft report.
What's the deadline for us to have the P E R done and approved to get in line for the grants that we're talking about?
April. So, you know, unfortunately, we gotta do more paperwork to go and get this project financed. This piece is gonna be very important to allow Steve Brock to have some conversations that he will need to have to solicit on your behalf, like we did for the water tower project, try to get some grant money to help for the great impact of the project. Should it go forward, parallel to this, ideally, we're moving forward with design in 2022 also. We have to find ways to find that design, that's more expensive than this, so that's something that we have. Kevin first approached Kathy on and had those conversations. I've got a request in Bill Markins from the Indiana Finance Authority to really have a meeting and get the state involved and also get D N R back to the table. I think you guys met with him back several months ago, too. Just to make sure they understand where the town is looking to go and hope we can get them to participate.
Can I tell you what, I had my phone call with him. How about that?
No, I have not. I haven't shared with him.
Go ahead.
While you guys were gone, I got a phone call. Guy didn't, if he said who it was, I didn't catch his name. And he wanted to talk to me about if he would have money to, or have water available to be purchased. And I said, "Yeah." I said, "We do that." He said, "Involved." And I said, "Yeah." And he said, "Okay." Well, he said, "I'm in the process of bidding on a project, a sewer project at the D N R." And I said, "Oh, well, why don't you talk, I said, "Why don't you call and talk to our president? He knows more about that, because I thought Kevin could maybe get a little more insight from him." And he said, "No, that's okay, I'm just wanting to make sure that we quote on this." And he said, "We've got capability going to getting water." He said, "You've got water there?" And I said, "Yeah." He said, "How does that meet?" And I said, "I'm not in that area, I don't know what that looks like." And it opens it up, I just know they're trying to tell me X, Y, Z has got X amount of water, you know? And he said, "Okay." I said, "Why don't you call and talk to Kevin?" And I said, "He's the board president." "No, no, no." He said, "We'll get the quote together and everything, and if we need to, we'll contact you later." He said, "They're looking at upgrading it next year." So I thought, "They're looking at putting money into their system, so, and upgrading it." So I thought, "Interesting." But I still have his phone number. Somewhere, I delayed, put it somewhere. So that we can, you know, have to call back saying, "You're the one that called about the water fight." So, but...
Questions?
Yeah, how much is he talking about? What were you, our usage, is that what he's talking about?
He was wanting to get water to use for the renovations that they're looking at doing out there, whatever that was for.
Which I find is strange, because they have a tower with water, so maybe he doesn't know.
And that's what I thought, that tower right there by the school, can they not use off of it?
That's where it's at, yeah.
Yeah, that comes from Bloomingdale, so I'm surprised, that's what I'm confused, because Bloomingdale is where, is who charges them for their water.
Right, right. Because that's what I thought, I thought, "You all get Bloomingdale water the same we get, so unless Blooming..." Well, some people say Bloomingdale won't sell water, so maybe they talk to them and they wouldn't do it.
But...
Because I've heard people go to Rockville to get their water, like bulk water, so maybe Bloomingdale won't sell bulk water.
If Bloomingdale won't sell bulk, or bulk water, should we be talking to them before we agree to sell bulk water?
I think Bloomingdale's problem is their tower, they've had some issues with their tower.
They've had trouble filling it on a few occasions, I don't know if that's ongoing or...
Yeah, with filling it, because they were trying to get a grant or something, I think, what I've heard, for a new tower or something. I don't know if it's got some leaks or something, so it's not holding, so it might be why they don't sell the bulk, but...
Well, they have a small tower, so I know they don't have a lot in the air, whether that's a part of it or not. But selling bulk water is part of our water rate, which would have been approved as part of that contract, so...
And he didn't say how much or anything, you know, he just, not that I know we've done it before, so I just thought it was interesting that there was, having people do bids on upgrading out there.
Want to make sure that you look at part D on page three on the compensation part, that's where we talked about how we were gonna divide that.
Right, I see that, that's that money from the CARES Act.
Yes.
So the A R P.
A R P. Yeah, money. So we have guaranteed that half with a relationship with Westler for the other half, depending on whether or not the progression takes place. And that is A R P money?
Yeah.
Yes.
Every time, money's gone.
Just to go back to this water thing, because Bloomingdale's not part of the project, is probably why you were notified, we were notified about water. That make sense?
I have no idea.
I just, because I understand why they wouldn't use water from the park.
Yeah, because they have hydrants out there.
He was just asking if we had water available to be purchased at bulk, at bulk, that we could load.
Right.
And I said, "Yeah, over by the firehouse."
Sounds like you're just talking about a few loads. If they're gonna transport it by truck? Is that what it sounds like?
That's what, he was very vague and just...
Got a strange phone call.
And maybe somebody didn't know the area, maybe, that, you know, I don't know, I would just go out.
This will put us in position for the, moving forward with those grant agencies. It will, it will meet all the requirements, and I know you have said, and I think Steve Brock said, rural development is one of the most stringent that we have to meet.
Yeah, that's included, yeah. But this is the, the next minimum bar we gotta hit to move that, that budget.
Is that still NOVAC?
It's with the Rural Community Assistance Program, which is related to rural development, but it's a little bit different in terms of how, the program's a little different. So AMP, we're continuing to work and need to try to figure out ways to, you know, for example, get D N R as an option.
Yeah, um, like you said, I mean, this is something we have to do regardless. We have to have a P E R in place to move forward in a way, so...
And I did make sure I ran this by Nick. And Nick and I spoke today, and he, I mean, he said there was no problems with the contract language here, so long as the asking price was as stated here. He was fine with that, he told me.
Before the board takes action on that, is there anything else you need to leave in the record with respect to...
Yeah, I was looking for that. And I gotta go back, you remember what I told you there, that Steve wanted this to...
That should have been included there.
Yes. And that was fine. Yeah, if you have other questions, go ahead with those, and I'll find that.
Color coded system maps, yes.
So we'll have exhibits for where the new, the new pipe will be colored by size.
Okay, okay, alright. That all is up with this, okay.
Well, I can paraphrase what I sent to Nick. And what it allows for us to go ahead and make a statement of contracting with an engineer at this preliminary stage, that we'll make that, that statement in an open meeting, based on, you know, the parameters of past history with this engineering company, based on the needs of where we've got to go, and this is out of rural development language, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That, that we're allowed to do that. So I did send that on to Nick, the language that came from, from rural development, and he was in agreement with, with us going ahead and proceeding with that, with that statement, that we would go ahead and put in verbally that we are going to go with Westler on this project, just based on past history and based on, as Nick said it, you've got a relationship with them, and they're already down the road cost-wise with this, so there would be no reason to search outside and hold a bidding process for that. Does that sound pretty much what Nick had, what our rural development said?
Said.
And I thought I had sent that to you, but maybe I didn't send that. I did send it to Nick.
Was that last week, week before?
No, that, this agreement here was last week.
Okay.
That would have happened two months ago, maybe.
There was something about two months of primary?
Yes.
Rural development requires that you, at least discuss in a public meeting, that you have a project that will require engineering services. And then Nick, I believe, weighed in on the steps that you would have to take.
Correct.
In addition to just discussing in a public meeting, if any, before you made a decision and, you know, what you're gonna have with this contract, for example.
Because I know in May, we ended up and had this one, which I thought in June, we already brought it up, that we were gonna go ahead with Westler, but is that just for the PF?
P E R.
P R?
I wanted to make sure that your attorney was aware that they're pursuing funding, most likely through rural development, and that he read and understood what, if any, healthcare requirements that funding agency would have. I don't want you to get down the road and then say, "I can give reimbursement costs" that you incur early on the project, and just trying to keep that at an open for you by entering some information into the meeting notes now. That's the purpose of this.
Meeting the requirements of rural development was for us to do that, to make that statement, that that is our, our plan to proceed through this project with Westler.
West, huh?
Yes, yeah, that's in simple terms.
Okay, because I thought we already pretty well agreed when we...
We did, and we, I had that in Nick's hands to review that, that language as it's laid out from rural development, and he was, he was fine with that also.
Okay.
Yeah, again, it's been a few months, so I kinda tried to step back and refresh on how we got here and some things that have been happening, but, you know, by all means, if you guys have questions or thoughts about where we're at, or what really, why we're doing what it is that we're doing right now, by all means, let's, let's talk about it. We have, you know, we've got the land identified, we've vetted it from an environmental standpoint and those types of things. It's big enough, you know, so we have to make sure we have clearance between a facility and a residence, for example. Troy came and met with us, if you recall, and talked about, you know, he operates some of these facilities, so trying to get that comfort there, I think, we got to that point with the board, or at least we got you that information. So now it's just, hey, let's, everyone move forward, these are the steps we need to take, and we're on our end in coordination with Steve Brock and Amy Miller, just trying to find ways to get it funded and position the town in the best opportunity to get upgrades as well as possible.
And from my understanding, the spot that we've ended up and we've talked about for this, it would be able to handle if the state park came on?
Yeah.
Okay. That was one I know you guys were looking at, and I didn't remember if that was confirmed, that spot would work?
We looked at three options.
Right, we did.
One without any D N R. One sending two D N R, and then one very similar to what the county option was, but instead of going on down the road, it would be here on town in front of you. So the three options that we looked at.
I did find the language that was shared with Nick, and he got his blessing. It's for engineering and architectural services. Applicants shall publicly announce all requirements for engineering and architectural services, negotiate contract engineering and architectural services on the basis of demonstrated competence and qualifications for the type of professional services required. for the type of professional services required and at a fair and reasonable price. Step two, when project design services are procured separately, the selection of the engineer or architect shall be done by requesting qualifications based on proposals in accordance with this se- section. Three, applicants may procure engineering and architectural services in accordance with applicable state statutes or local requirements, provided, uh, the state director determines that such procurement meets the intent of this, this section. That's exactly where we're at today, and that's when I, I broke it down with Nick and talked about those steps. And why it would be in probability in our best interest to go ahead and get that locked in. We have a history with Wester, uh, we have a cost history with Wester.
Wester, yes.
And, and we're starting down a road with tight, uh, requirements for getting the P E R done and then going right into the design phase. And that's critical that we get to that point.
So, what's an ideal step for, or how, ideally, we're bidding this project in next year, this time next year we're bidding. Now, to get to that point, uh, we need to design and permit and get this put together. And that's why the county and the state and D N R, those outreach is right now are real important, because I think all three of those are interested in support of this project in different ways. And, um, you don't have utility yet to collect revenue, so you don't have to weigh back the bond right now. You can't really go borrow money as, as I understand it, so those are really who we're looking to to get this started.
But what we commit to today doesn't bind us with any, so if the cost comes out, the saying that we can, don't qualify for grants, we're not stuck and binding in the contract, correct?
In a contract for.
To proceed with any kind of a project, then?
No, not, not, nothing other than that, what's on.
Well, and it's here, okay.
Yeah, absolutely not.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I was reading that right.
Yeah, sure, but I, I guess if things fall in place.
If everything falls in place, yeah.
And design it next year and get it set up so that we can, um, submit for funding and get Swift Round Two, which will be next July. And then go to rural development, ask for half, and then have something to bid at the end of next year.
And what time does, when does the public hearing, so that way you get the vote from the people of the community, so that way, if they agree to, so we can proceed with something like that?
Yeah, so we'll probably do the public hearing for the report in April, at your April meeting, would be my guess. Um, now, you'll have utility formation discussions, you'll have rate ordinances and those types of things, which will be set. In, in addition to that public hearing, um, and probably would take place much later in the year than just the report.
Okay, but when, when they, would you have the public hearing, we'll have an idea of a rate, so that way citizens will know what kind of rate they're looking at?
Probably not, not in April, because that will give us the report for Steve to carry to the funding agencies and negotiate. Can you give us three million, can you give us, and all those discussions that take place after the April public hearing will, is really what is the key to getting the rate arrangement to give you that, that rate structure, does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Yeah.
We still are not.
We still got more steps.
Well, I mean, we've got steps ahead of us that, if that rate comes in at, at an exorbitant high rate, or we don't get the, the grants, that, that we're not going to be able to move forward. And that's, that's part of that discussion as we get through with Steve Brock and where are those rates? And, uh, we've, I think we're all comfortable with a few numbers there, and that's the discussions that I've had with Steve Brock. It's where those numbers need to fall for our community, otherwise, it's just not gonna be a feasible project.
Right.
And to get to those rates, the grant process that we're trying to get into is going to be able to buy those, those numbers down. That's what's critical, just like we did with the water rates. Uh, the term was buy down, or that's a, a legal term, but it gets it down to a usable.
That's one way I understand.
Yes, yeah.
I don't think I answered your question very well, sorry.
That, that answered it though. I just wanna make sure that the citizens know we're looking out for them, that we're just not trying to. I mean, it is a needed item for our community.
If you still have a venue to say no later on that road, is what you're trying to get at.
So, once you had the public hearing in April, it's just, uh, well, it's a requirement of the funding agencies to show that you presented the report to your community.
Right.
It's not enough to have commitment or obligation to the project. And.
Is there another one, though, that comes up after we ended up and we do no rates with the public?
Yeah, you're, you'll have to be your rate ordinances.
Okay.
I don't remember exactly what those publication requirements are, but I think after we read them two or three times.
That's the only questions I have, I mean. Do you have any?
No. I won't be here.
We may raise your, may raise your pay. So we need to reflect in the minutes that we had discussions concerning the engineering services for the project. Am I correct in saying it is an agreement?
It is an agreement for the board to grant.
That we intend to proceed with Wester, and based on the evaluation of, of Nick Sauter.
Proceed with Wester for.
Engineering services.
Or Nick Sauter?
I don't remember how I say that. With our attorney's approval, yeah. We are proceeding with, with this, after consultation with our attorney, Nick Sauter. Who's rated.
The officer.
It's very normal, huh?
And that should suffice with.
For a little bit of.
Rural development, that's, that's where we're trying to.
Thank you.
That we've had a public meeting, we've talked about it, we discussed it, we decided that we're moving down this path. Based on what I read from rural development, we can, we can follow that procedure. And we've used our attorney to evaluate the process. Okay, anything else to fill in? I would like a motion, uh, that we are in agreement to sign. What's before you?
Okay, I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion that we go ahead and proceed to sign on this agreement for Wester. With P E R.
I have a second.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second that we're going to proceed with amendment number one, agreement for the new collection system. And basically it's laying out the, uh, steps for funding the P E R with Wester Engineering. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I would like to have one of your good copies to go ahead and sign if I could. And then I'll, I'll just turn this to you.
Okay.
What other, what other things can we do to help? So, when I talk about Steve and what he's doing, or do you guys understand why his role is and why he's doing it? And Amy, I'll tell, she's a grant administration.
Trade you office.
You do?
Yeah, she's really.
Amy's a grant, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you met Amy, you said?
Yes, I've met her, and I worked with her when we did, uh.
Tower problem.
Yeah.
End of the tower project.
End of it, did we do anything on the?
Well, we did the hydrants and the, the valves.
Yeah, yeah, that she was, yeah, she's rural.
Did she do the fire station too, way back?
Uh, yes, she did way back, yeah. It's been ten or twelve years ago.
At least.
Been a while, yeah.
Well, it makes it nice, but she'd make you feel stupid if you don't understand what she do. And she was real good with helping me when I first come on and what everything was and.
Anything else for?
Think so. Your time period now with, with beginning of this P E R and where we're.
Start tomorrow, Todd, with draft in March, we'll do the public hearing, we're planning for doing that in April.
I think we've done the step today's date, you guys signed it second, is that a problem?
There's another one, one for you, one for him.
Now, you said there might be another call, maybe with the state, do you know when?
Yeah, so, uh, I emailed Indiana Finance Authority Thursday and asked, I was hoping to have that discussion before tonight. And really, uh, you know, to be frank, that what I wanted to come out of that conversation is for them to talk to their friends at D N R and consider moving forward with something that they've ongoing, use that money to help the town if you're able, but something to have to vote.
Okay.
I think that's what you get, it's your decision, but.
I like to look at all options.
Got it.
I mean, whatever's gonna be feasible and for the town, that's.
So, uh, now we're back from, uh, the I F A and, um, we, you guys can check and see what's going on.
Steve was very, uh, adamant that we look at all those funding agencies. And we all know that the history of Steve Brock and working with funding agencies, well, focused immensely on the water tower project. And so, following his, uh, recommendation, I think is, is a wise thing for us to do, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you. You expect him to get back in touch with us on that phone call?
I do, yeah.
Okay. So, I will forward when we know that, cause I had asked you about that, and then the, the, we hope to have another.
Yeah, uh, so I asked for two meetings, uh, one is just with, with the state and the town, make sure that he can ask you any questions about commitment and, and need and such things, and then the second interview with county and D N R. And, and the state and, and town. Thank you.
Thank you. Another old business, I called Mick Bardos, who did the work on the, the arch pillars, the concrete work up there on the, under the benches and the planters. He is going to come sometime later this week and take a look at the concrete that was damaged across the street from the person that owns the corner store, and give us a quote on that per Nick's recommendation that we get that. He will follow up then on, on getting that taken care of. The other quote that I'm asking for is in front of Brian Nelson's building. We never replaced that sidewalk initially when we put the new sidewalks in because we didn't know what was gonna happen to that building. And if they were gonna tear it down, we thought the sidewalk might get destroyed at the time. But I think now he's shown that, that he's built something there that it's, we, we need to do that.
Surprised us.
Yes, so he will also give us a quote on that. Is there anything else you can think of, other than a, a major sidewalk project on the north end that we need to have Mick look at? Could not think of anything else?
No, we can't even, for now.
That one comes to mind.
He, he should be in town later this week, and I'll be with him, have him put together some numbers on that.
Okay.
Uh, I have also contacted a number of times NDOT about the road construction signs that have been up all summer. And they are checking into when they're gonna take that down. They have to have, uh, final completion by the contractor. And the, the guy I talked to said he would be checking into that and see if they have received that complete, completion notice. Otherwise, they can't take them down until they get to that.
So is their job, so they don't know if it's completed or not?
Well, I, I think, I think I'm ninety-nine percent sure it is completed, but whether they have a sign, it's signed off, I don't know.
Okay.
Because the project was only to put the rumble strip in outside of the city limits on two thirty-six. That was the project.
Ah, okay.
Which they did a month ago. Is that down here?
Yeah.
Down two thirty, that's.
That was like the summer.
Oh, yeah, the summer, the spring.
Well, they fixed that culvert down here, but this was.
The culvert didn't, it didn't do it, this is about the, I figured it was the culvert.
No, yeah.
How was those guys out, where did they get that?
I did get a, a quote from ByState this past week for patching in town. We talked about that sometime back. He had time to do it the day that he called me, and so I went ahead and approved, based on our other conversations, that we go ahead and get that. And I think, Kat, you got a bill on that, right?
Yep, you guys signed off on it. Oh.
The ByState.
The patch.
No, Pat Yacke is two thousand some dollars. I wrote that check today.
Yeah, it was going to be as much as four thousand dollars.
Alright, it wasn't very.
But we didn't have near the patching that he thought we would have, so we were, at, at about that.
Two thousand three hundred or something, I think.
Yeah, so, which I was happy that, cause I didn't think we had that much, uh, to worry about there. Along the same line, I had asked a long time ago for a cost on, uh, prepping, cleaning, and, and sealing the cracks on North Main Street on the new asphalt. He finally got me this yesterday. His bid for doing that is eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And that's a oh, he's got a A S T M thirty-four oh five hot core type crack sealant. What that means, I don't know. But, uh, he assured me that that was, uh, a quality material that will fill those cracks and, and maintain the integrity of the road. I was surprised at the eight thousand dollars, and I told him that, and he said, uh, they charge eighty cents a linear foot. And I've been online checking, and that, that seems to be about the middle of the, of the cost for that. So, you know, i- i- it's, it's the average fulfilling that.
I'm approaching a mile in length, isn't it?
He said it was ten thousand lineal feet, because it's not just the centerline cracks, he's gonna go off and hit all the other. So ten thousand lineal feet.
Is there that many cracks, other than just the middle?
There are.
It might prevent cracks.
Yeah, there are some other cracks there, yes. Not deep cracks, not real pronounced.
Okay.
Uh, reading online.
Is this a hundred percent or, or just blowing out and filling cracks?
It's, it's not, it's, it's a rubber material.
Does it completely cover the road, or just?
No, it's just, just the cracks, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, what I found out from doing some research, they said that, uh, for every dollar that you spend on this kind of sealant will save you six dollars down the road on, on patching and paving. So, everything I have read said it is a very cost-worthy investment for a community to do that. My question is, eight thousand two hundred and fifty, Kathy, where does that last?
That's what I was, that's what I was just looking at.
I was wondering too, I'm like.
That's, yeah, that's pretty substantial.
Compared to a new surface.
Yeah.
Pay me now or pay me later?
So, if we do this, when is he think, when would he do this, work?
Uh, weather is not a problem, it's just as long as the pavement's dry. He said I can do it. Before the end of the year, I can do it January, February, when they're not busy, any of those days, cause they heat the material and put it on hot. But it just has to be dry, they cannot put it on.
The freeze and thaw wouldn't affect them?
The, talking to him, it would not.
To some point, could a crack get so big that they're gonna double ding you on lineal feet?
The reason that they're using this material as the crack filler, it, it's only for narrow cracks. If they were going to have to fill a deeper or wider crack, then they would have to go back to most likely an asphalt material. Yeah, but we're talking about cracks that are probably in that half to three-quarter inch maximum, is what I've seen, looking at North Main Street. Yeah, we're talking about cracks that are probably in that half to three quarter inch maximum is what I've seen looking at North Main Street.
So you have twenty thousand dollars budgeted with N B R or N B H next year. And you had sixteen thousand automatically taken out of there for your dub. So that leaves you four thousand.
Okay.
And you got two thousand in local roads and streets, so there's six. But any snow removal's gonna come out of.
Come out of.
Out of those.
Yeah.
Now, you've got your ready day fund that's setting that's not using anything, so you take some money out of it. I mean, you haven't used any at all this year on it and.
Will the sewer project, if, if that, that be reworked?
If, yeah, if and when the sewer project would go through, that would, that would be a major, uh, redo of the streets as you come down through.
The ready day?
No, the sewer project, yeah.
Street sidewalks everywhere.
I'm, I'm not comfortable spending that kind of money.
I'm not either, not this early in the game.
Yes.
Like I said, we don't know about snow removal, what the weather's gonna be, I just.
If we get rid of that, no, when I say that, no, it was twenty, twenty-six.
Yeah, it's got a few years left on that note.
So.
Right now, everything's kind of in the air, cost wise.
Yeah. So, I thought I'd bring it to you.
I think we should table that right now.
Okay, I'm good with that. That is everything I have on my list. Does the board have other items to add to the list? You or old business? Yeah? Anything else you?
I do have a couple comments.
Okay.
Welcome in you as a board, the great presentation on the arch. That weekend. Had towed Darrell in C N seven, I've seen it now, it looks nice out there.
Thank you.
It really does. Here's some help with all the working on that. Sometime people just need to hear that, you know?
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
One more thing. This, this deal, pursuing the sewer, I've heard this for forty years here. But it doesn't matter, I think you're going down a right avenue, Paul, when I say.
Thank you, that means a lot.
If there's a talent needs one, this town needs it. Do I want to pay that cost? I can make my water bill now, you know, with what, twenty-four hundred, twenty-six hundred gallons. And you were talking about the buy down earlier, I just heard the Clinton tonight. Dana wanted the county council to give him like three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars to a river water project over there. They turned him down. They were saying, you know, if they had to, what sort of figure was, I cannot remember which it was, is going to allow people to buy water like fifty-six dollars a month. They didn't get this money, there's gonna be like eighty-six dollars a month for every resident. So, I guess I might not say too much about my water, I got a good water.
Thanks.
Tower, the tower was a blessing to the owner as part of that.
Yep.
Good.
Town needed that too. You know, not, not much left of this town, you know, it's, it's a place to live. Somebody has to.
You're part of that. Thank you for your, and, and you've been part of that.
Well, a little bit, yeah, not much for the day, um.
Kathy?
On that note, we got a very nice thank you to look forward on to Karen from Mary Pickford about the celebration.
And now that's another person we need to thank is Karen Stutler. She's Karen Stutler for the grant writing and stuff.
Yeah.
For this.
Yeah, I had talked about that, yeah.
I mean, if it wasn't for the forever fund, it wouldn't have been possible, any of it, because that's where the money all came from, so.
Her grant writing really was an asset.
And here's our readings, and that's showing with OverPeck having, uh, a leak. And I didn't catch it last month, but they had sixteen thousand gallon usage, and they normally use around three or four thousand.
Oh.
And I caught it this month, but they had twenty-one thousand.
Did they find out?
Uh, I called and talked to them to make sure they weren't doing something for some strange reason. And Tammy said, no, not that they're aware of, and so Jason was around that day, so he went to check the meter to make sure. And, um, so there's a problem with the meter itself, something about the way the meter's sitting there, being able to turn it off. So, when he did something, it spewed water out, well, he didn't want to do anymore because he didn't want to break anything. So he told me to call Ronnie, and so they came and looked at it. And while they were there, or before they got there, OverPeck's had figured out where their leak was and they were going to get with Ronnie, was my understanding, and they're gonna get it fixed.
Okay.
So I talked to Dan when I got called back town to Ronnie was coming, and he said, we'll start searching. And then when Ronnie told me, he said that they pretty much figured out where it was and they're just gonna get it taken care of, and so I'm not hurt anymore from him. So I'm assuming it's been taken care of. So, I mean, still with that leak.
Still.
We're still.
I mean, we're still under twenty thousand.
Yes, yeah. And we have residents on the back, here on the back street that's using about twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand a month. And I don't know if they're watering animals or what, but he's paying the bill. I'd love to know what the ones over here did because all of a sudden they're down to thirty-six dollars, forty dollars, so they've done something.
Yeah.
But they said all along they didn't have a leak, but they did.
That is true.
We don't need a submission though.
No, no, I'll just.
Nineteen thousand.
Nineteen eight ninety?
Gallon, we're averaging.
A month?
Oh, no.
Daily.
Daily. Right above it's the total.
No, it fluctuates, but yeah.
About five hundred.
Five hundred ninety-six thousand for the month.
Nineteen fifty-eight, yeah.
That's great, yeah. Many more part readings are up to twenty-five, thirty thousand gallons, I'm like, oh, what's going on? And it's like, okay, if it's seven in a day, maybe two, I'm filling the water tower, then I'll go back down.
We, we have runs, runs a month with the eighteen thousand.
Is that a good?
Yeah.
I don't know what that loss is, what that equates, but that's still, that's still pretty good.
Yeah, um, probably need to redo your audit, your water loss audit.
Tom did that, did Tom do that for that yearly thing that he had to do?
He might have. We need to talk to Tom.
So you had done it last time and tried to send it to the R cap and then they could do the validation, if you recall.
Right, that is correct.
That was due in twenty nineteen.
That's a new meter, fairly new meter.
Did that water without, you sent to see you, the water loss?
Every yearly review, you have to have somebody be checking that.
Yeah. I was thinking not too long ago, he come back in here and said that he got the clear.
He did.
Is that like the first of the year maybe?
Okay, good.
I forget now that he got back and everything was good, then he got the clear on it.
Yeah, we used Wester the last time to do the, the audit.
The validation, yeah.
The validation, yes.
That's two years.
It has been a little, yeah.
Would he have just gotten a little payback on that? Did he get, or did he do another one then? Maybe he did another one.
Tom can do it.
I, do I have to give you papers every year that he has to go through? So.
Tom can do the validation on everybody except for us.
Except for himself, and he had trouble finding somebody.
Right, and so we ended up going with Wester and getting that, they helped us out on that.
I don't really live in two, but.
That's just my memory.
I think it was due by the end of last, twenty twenty.
Okay, maybe it was. Last year was a little strange.
Yeah.
Kind of like a deja vu.
Here are my decisions I've done. And that water is on about a hundred fifty-five customers, households too, so. And with future, actually using quite good water, so.
How many households do you have, Chip?
Uh, about a hundred fifty-five is what I built. And we've had, um, new rental move in over here. Um, Marie Beeman's house sold, they're fixing it up.
Who bought it?
A gal out of Crawfordsville, and she's not sure if she's gonna move into her, if she's gonna flip it yet, so somebody's been there working. So it's not staying empty very long, I mean, you know. And here's our town and water accounts.
And which house is that one?
Which one?
The one that this person bought, the new one, the one that might be flipped?
Oh, right around the corner beside the Baptist church.
Just on the other side.
On the other side, Baptist church where Marie Beeman used to live. And they, someone's been there pretty regular, cleaning and, so.
So, any designs?
Say that again?
Any design plans or? Or searches?
Yeah, it's got a set, it says nineteen ninety on the cover of it.
The time, I guess it is.
Oh, that's time, excuse me. Remember if that was the.
And I added an account, you know, even the water, so we'll be able to keep track, oh. So I'll be able to keep track of. Our A R P money.
Okay, got you.
So that we can see.
Right.
Somewhere down there, I went back, started from the first. Showed the company, Ann, and I've already written a check out, so.
Okay.
I'll have to submit that on that, and, and I did that after December, so next month, all of it will show up at the top.
But the new A R P will not come out this summer, right?
That's what it said.
Steve Brock told me.
Yeah, so he said, I took it like late summer or fall, last.
Yeah, I was thinking he said July.
It gets cold, they freeze, they won't work.
And I did send off to that meeting today, I just wanted her on the S R F to find out which one, because I don't have what she's talking about, that exhibit B.
Right.
And so I wanted to see if she could just send me a whole copy of that agreement that she said, that deposit agreement. And that way we'll have it all, and it's like a contact I can get with her to figure out what's going on and.
Okay.
Flow that way.
That's, that's a secret. But don't put this crap like that.
And now, you don't have a meter at the park, right?
Yeah, there is a meter.
There's, but it's not, but it's not a reading, it's not a, you know, she told me one at the park that we were talking about, that we need to get a reading meter on that.
Well, I think that is correct, yes.
Cause I've got, I think I've pretty much got everything now that's.
That had to be dug up when we had that big leak actually paved over there. And I don't know if they took that meter out at the time and it's down.
Last time I saw it was when we had the leak and, and Chief was trying to pick, get the ice off of it so it could get to it.
Yeah, I, uh, I shut the, the water off at the meter pit the other day, and there was, it just, it wasn't hooked to a, to a meter.
No reader?
No reader.
Cause I got the church, both churches, and I have community buildings.
We need to decide how we're going to do the firehouse.
That's what I thought the firehouse was still.
It's such a large meter that we have, we were, Ronnie Black talked us out of trying to do it just because of the cost of that size of meter.
For putting the reader on it?
Yes, but I, I think we need to be checking it monthly. And the only way to check it is to go ahead and open up that big lid on that pit and actually manually read it, which I know Kathy's not gonna do.
That's not, I mean, I mean, that's hard for anybody to kind of.
Yes.
How many people would it take to get it open?
Well, Ronnie can open it, he, he's got a special bar that he hooks and pulls it open, but.
I probably couldn't open that.
Yeah. It's just something we need to talk about, the cost of that, and maybe check with Ronnie, or check with, uh, the supplier.
I'll check with the supplier and see what.
See what a meter costs.
What it would cost, because it would also would help, so that way she knows when, again, the idea, wouldn't it help with selling water? I mean, you kind of know when there's a fire run.
If I have a big fire, then I'll mark on my papers for Tom that we've had a large fire, so he'll know there's a big usage.
There was, uh, a couple of different times they ran a substantial amount of water over there testing fire hoses.
But see, I don't even know any of that goes on.
And you could go through, I don't know, I haven't, you know, four or five thousand gallon water pretty quick as you're testing hoses.
Oh, yeah.
And they're using the daylight gun, which is a good water user, but it's, they need to, they need to have a little experience back.
Yeah.
But yeah, but we decided, if you're deciding on the firehouse and your park, I think everything else is down, it's down.
Well, we need to get a cost on that, what that meter would be at. We need it, we need to be able to, for you to keep track of that. Anything else? Anybody else?
Any update on what was going on with our lawsuit on the corner store?
No, uh, and this is a little better than a rumor, well, I was told that it was sold. Yeah, I think it is. So, I don't know who bought it, I don't know, I know nothing about it.
So it's gonna change hands again?
Yep. My understanding.
You mean, from the guy that did all the work here in the courts?
Yes.
Yeah, it sold. I'm pretty sure since then, he, he doesn't own that, but I don't know who does.
Uh, we should be able to go on that map, I.
I looked the other day and it still has, um.
This guy? But he's still responsible for the damage to the site.
That's what I was going.
He's not, he can't run away from that.
No, I wouldn't think so.
What about all the court costs that were from the original owners?
I don't know. That was a thing that we needed to talk to Nick about to find out. I don't know about the judgments, you know, there was twice that went to court.
Cause I figured we'd had some kind of a lien or something put on to the, they'd done a title switch that they couldn't just switch over the title.
Right.
Does the town get, or does the county get that money then?
I don't know. I really don't. That'd be something, again, we need to follow up with Nick.
Cause even just sure it was on there, but.
Yeah.
I would have thought somewhere that it would have registered on there. There were leads and X Y Z paint the leads and, and I couldn't find anything on there when I went on there.
Well, if there's a lien on it, you can't sell it until that lien is removed.
They need to be satisfied.
Mm-hmm, and I thought that was what the step was before she transferred it, was setting some kind of.
And I don't remember how it, if it, cause I looked at it the other day, and I looked at who paid the taxes on it. And I don't remember now what it said, because I looked at several that day. So I don't remember, because a, a strange thing came up in that one that we got to look at different stuff on. We couldn't figure out why.
It's still on the person that initially bought it, it's still in it.
Okay, that's why I was thinking it was interesting.
Okay.
So there's been no transfer?
If.
From the first time.
If it has been told, it's still not.
I heard it, but I don't know for sure.
They could be backlog, getting paperwork filed too, but I'd be curious to know if we ever got a lien or anything on it so we can get. Because I mean, think of all the money, I mean, we, we paid Nick, a retainer, but still, I mean.
And see, that's why I said, I wonder where that money goes. I don't know how backlog they are, because when we bought our property and John bought that property, it was switched over within a week to ten days.
It, it is, yeah, I don't think this one's real clean.
So.
Okay.
So I don't know.
Larry, I want to thank you for your service.
This is it, Larry?
You've done it.
That's it.
A yeoman's job for more than one.
I can send you out and bring me up there next month.
There you go.
I'll consider it. I'll let you know.
We'll just wait and have Sharon take this spot, see.
Uh, good luck with that too. She'd be better qualified.
If she could set that.
We do appreciate it. If anybody else has anything, we're adjourned.